Sitting for ready.
Alrighty folks, uh call this meeting order. Uh this is our work session for Thursday, March ninth. Do I hear an adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second, I was a favorite, please say hi.
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 Hey, your name, Pastor Hannah's lake. Well, Steve, I think you're up.
Yeah, where would you like me to sit?
Here or around. Oh, okay, seriously, yeah, yeah, and you're on the camera there. You can hear it. That way I say back.
Well, Sam, welcome, Sam. Can hear you better there, so.
So, um, I thought what we could do is, uh, I guess make a few introductory remarks. And then you could ask, um, Chair Larson to give some background from the planning commission's perspective. Uh, and then we can get into the details of the actual changes. So the, um, last year, uh, about this time, council and the planning commission started receiving, uh, a lot of public input about the, uh, one of the projects that's still pending, um, uh, for reasonable use exception. So that's, um, part of the critical areas code and it's, uh, the intent of it is to, um, the, uh, allow, provide a process which an applicant, uh, can apply for, for this type of permit reasonable use exception. Uh, and, uh, when the, um, application of the regulations takes away all property, uh, about, or, you know, the ability to, to use the property for what's considered reasonable economic use. So in the case of a single family, uh, zone property, you know, single family homes, and we consider reasonable use. And that's usually, you know, what they're looking for. And that's used, that's what the cases have been, uh, up until this point, you know, for the last, uh, fifteen years or so that we've, uh, have had this, um, exception in the, um, code. Of course, that's to go to the public, uh, hearing before the hearing examiner approval. And, um, so there's, uh, opportunity for people to comment on it, uh, once we get to that point. Um, but the, the basic of just of what your planning mission was trying to do after hearing a testimony and, and talking with the staff and, um, city attorney was to just shore up the ability of the city to make sure mitigation, uh, that's required by the hearing examiner is carried out, uh, and, and that if there's also provisions for ensuring that if for some reason the, the applicant doesn't carry it out, then the, the city has the ability to, uh, to take care of the mission. Um, so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chair Larson.
Great. It's good to see you all. Thanks for, uh, having me. Um, as Steve said, this was actually, um, brought to our attention, uh, based on that, right, beginning of last year's development of our work plan for the year. And so we felt like it was important enough, and as the housing market had, um, you know, been exploding, uh, we thought that we will, we will be seeing more properties that will be subject to REEs, um, you know, through our planning department. And so we thought it was worthwhile to at least, you know, look at in response to these concerns, um, what the terms were around that, if there were any rates, like Steve said, to shore it up. And, uh, one of the things I want to point out is we did not have a public hearing on this. And this came about in large part to the fact that legally there wasn't a lot we could do with our REB code to change that. And, um, we felt like we had done a very rigorous job of going through this material, even with, um, attorney Pratt. Uh, and we had had some public input and conversations with, um, other folks in the community that were, you know, really familiar with our latest codes and critical area ordinances. Um, as Steve said, we have these two recommendations. These were the two things legally that we could do and, uh, we feel are really important. And then I wanted to point out too, that I think that one of the, uh, challenges we ran into that we, we did not review, we reviewed what we asked of a, of a homeowner, but we didn't review the processes that we use to enforce REEs. And, um, I think it's important to consider that as we see more and more growth in our community, particularly if any of these, uh, laws go into effect, changing our housing, that our planning department needs help for, um, enforcing the rules that govern our town. And, uh, I think it mentions up here, there was one property that we found had not had any of its reports done. And, um, that was concerning because we didn't audit all of the properties that were subject to REEs to figure out if they in fact had been enforced and, and if the environmental, um, mitigation that was supposed to go into effect had actually been done. Um, so that's not something that we touched. Uh, we hope you'll take forward these two recommendations that could be made to the code. Um, but we also hope that you'll consider in your budgeting, um, how well staffed we are in our planning department so that we're not asking for more, um, where we're already challenged because there's so much to do. Um, do you have any questions of me regarding our work on this?
Yeah, Maddie, I could, could just tell me a little bit more about when you said that you didn't look at process. What do you mean by that?
At the enforcement process.
But, but you do have recommendations about it.
Uh, so, uh, we, we didn't get there. So we, our, our work was focused on the code itself. Okay. And what we could require of property owners who were applying for an RE. Okay. And so we went through that thoroughly and found that the only two places really that we could provide more teeth are in these recommendations that they have a, a, a financial security guarantee and that also the terms of their RE will be recorded against their deed. So that carries forward to the next owner.
That I understand.
Um, thank you. This is really nice. That's good work. Um, and it's always very thorough. So you mentioned that, uh, you focused on these two areas where there's some areas that you wanted to focus on that you had were advised maybe not, uh, have such supportive legal position.
Um.
That maybe we want to entertain.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I mean, Steve can tell you, I probably was the one that probed the deepest and hardest, uh, on this. And I anything that I thought, even that I very personally pushed, um, sure, there are a lot of things, but I feel really confident that, you know, from attorney Pratt's point of view, that there really wasn't a lot more to do in that regard. So, um, so I would say, you know, our next best option is to make sure enforcement happens. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, I'd like somebody to have to notify their neighbors and communicate, you know, all sorts of other things, but, uh, that's not necessarily something that apparently we can.
Thanks very much, Chair, Chair Carol Larson for great, uh, changes in the code. I'm just kind of intrigued by one change, which is the inability, adding the condition, the inability to provide reasonable use is not the result of an action or actions taken by the applicant or property owner. What, what brought that piece up? Because it doesn't sound like it's, uh, one of these things that we're talking about.
That, I, I think that already exists in the code. They can't like subdivide.
It wasn't spelled out, but it's just, um, so this was something that we saw was in other cities' code. And it seemed like, you know, they couldn't really think of a situation, uh, but, you know, you certainly don't want to get it to, to have an application come forward or somebody like short platted a lot, uh, maybe back, you know, a long time before the critical areas. And then, um, you know, if they, they, they created this situation where, uh, they, they lost reasonable use because of this action being took. So it's just sort of, this is something other communities have run into apparently. So we're just like, we might as well throw that in there as well.
So Steve on point, then with Maddie as well, we've had a couple of situations where we've just chopped something up in the past and it's down to like postage stamp sized lot out of a larger plot. And then they come to us and say, we should be able to roll on this because it's now. Does that mean that if they didn't specifically do it? So it was done in the past, they're not on the hook, so to speak. It'd have to be the actual voter or some sort of trail.
If it was a, it was a legally created lot, um, then we can't, and, and they purchase it, uh, we can't hold them accountable for what somebody did several decades ago. And it wasn't just like if this person did something, you know, then, then, then the hearing examiner could use that as a criteria to deny it. If, if there was something that, that made this lot undevelopable, uh, this could, something about line adjustment.
Sure.
That, uh, gives property to another piece. And I think there's not many situations on that property. Basically, that, I don't think it wouldn't happen with short flats. We have some, some safeguards against that, but it could happen with a long adjustment. So my zoning criteria, uh, somehow it slipped through and they're still at the corner of it. And the hearing examiner might, might find that they, they, uh, they lost the ability to claim any reasonable use.
So basically the response is, uh, from the hearing examiner, they, you created a situation. So there are no issues.
Right.
Uh, no, no, uh, reason for reasonable use exemption.
Steve, may I ask a question? You know, you know, I was looking at the Kirkland, uh, reasonable use, uh, ordinance. And one of the provisions here, I had just have a question whether we have a parallel provision. Um, it says, uh, the applicant has to submit a report prepared by a qualified critical area professional approved by the city and also fund peer review of this report by the city consultant. Uh, and I, I just have a couple more follow-up questions on the application too, but do we have that language in ours?
We do. We, it's a part of the general.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I just didn't do, uh, before this meeting, I didn't go do, uh, a review. So, so in other words, they are required to fund our consultants peer review.
Correct.
Okay. And, and we do that every time or just occasionally?
Uh, it, it depends on, on the situation. Sometimes it seems, um, overly burdensome when somebody is just submitting a geotechnical study to say that, oh, this, this slope can be built on safely. It meets the criteria for.
Okay, that makes sense.
But, but yeah, it's something like a wetland or, uh, reasonable use, we'll, we'll have our own.
And then in the application, do they have to basically, uh, demonstrate whether any other reasonable use of less impact on the critical area and critical area buffer is possible? In other words, can they, do they, and, and that's part of our peer review too, is anything less of a reasonable use?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the usual discussion, well, you know, there's a picnic, reasonable use of this.
I understand, but we have language.
You don't have language that says, is there, is there something, what you have in the criteria is that, uh, the, the examiner, uh, finds that the, the exemption is a minimum necessary to allow reasonable.
But this is their application has to demonstrate that. So I, I just, I think there could be some improvements in our application requirements when I look at this. And, um, also that the site design and construction staging of the proposal would have the least impact to the critical area and the critical area buffer. Again, their application has to demonstrate that it isn't like here examiner, you, you make this determination, at least they have to be asserting and trying to prove that as well. And then our peer review has to, uh, you know, make sure that's true from our point of view.
Yeah, and, and that's, you know, if there's language that, uh, I'm not sure. I know you sent me something about.
I did. I sent it to you and Kim ahead of time. So this is not a, I didn't surprise Steve.
Yeah, no, you can now, you can go back and look at it and I'll, I'll, I can see that.
Okay.
Addresses something that's not addressed in, in, uh, the general. That's, that, that sounds like something that would, would be generally somewhere in the general section of the, of the.
If so, so I did yellow highlight the, the places where I had questions. And so if we're already covered for those things, that would be great. The other, uh, big issue I wanted to bring up is the footprint, which I raised, uh, in the work sessions before, because our hearing examiner generally, uh, uses kind of a, a rule of thumb of twelve hundred fifty square feet. And then you can go up right, whatever the height limitation is. And Kirkland says this, one single family dwelling with a footprint no larger than seven hundred fifty square feet and a maximum gross floor area of fifteen hundred square feet, which is smaller than some of what we've been seeing, which have been twenty five hundred square feet, including cantilevered areas and attached garage not to exceed a footprint and gross floor area of two hundred fifty square feet. Um, and if no garage is provided, the square footage of the garage cannot be allocated to the square footage for the primary residence. So I, I just, I thought that would be more conservative than not leaving, just leaving it open ended what, uh, the size of a reasonable use would be. And so I'd at least like us as council and with our attorneys input and Steve's input to consider some language similar to that, which kind of shrinks a bit the footprint that, that we've been, um, seeing as a general rule of thumb. And I think it would guard against some of these, you know, there, there's that one that had the enforcement issues that was really a giant house, three stories. Yeah, yeah. So, um, so I think this would, uh, also kind of provide less incentive for people to buy forty thousand dollar lots and hope to build, you know, uh, a big, a big house on it and claim that that's reasonable. So, uh, those are two things I wanted to just put forward today. Uh, I know this was not something that the planning.
Well, we talked about what we were shut down. We were told it couldn't, couldn't be that that would be too complaining. So if, if you guys have another round that, I think that's an excellent way.
I, again, I'm looking at what Kirkland has currently in their code. That was what I just picked and you're by jurisdiction that what had maybe the same kind of demands, but maybe more resources to look at this issue. So.
One other thing that came up for us, um, well, two things. One was that it appears to the homeowner and forgive us because nobody on the planning commissioner are land use experts. It was just from our own exploring. We found that the property owner hires the experts to determine feasibility and the engineering and so forth that happens. And then often apparently that same group is then the one that does enforcement and writes reports. And so as a city, my understanding is if we as a city feel that those are credible entities, we say, okay, that's good enough. And if they're not, then we do some of our own due diligence. And I think that is a second, you know, related to a staffing issue, but it, I think it muddles the waters, particularly in the one case that we looked at where, um, the person or the entity that did the original feasibility and planning and then was also doing the recording, there was that disconnect, you know, it's reporting that things were done in the one report that got done in arrears. You know, I personally had a lot of questions that I couldn't, because our group wasn't working on that piece, but I could never get sort of to the bottom of like what the report said was, you know, within the, you know, uh, mitigation plan and, and whether, but there, there didn't seem to be any validation or verification that that in fact actually is happening. Um, and then the other thing, uh, to a question you had that we kicked around a little bit, but apparently it lies in another area of the code is we found out that the, the homeowner on this particular property, not only clear cut, you know, part of his back slope, um, and knowingly did that because he had been through the process that any new the environmental sensitivity of the area. He didn't, he wasn't required to pay any fines. And, uh, when we explored how to do that with an RE code, I guess that doesn't lie there, but it was concerning that, um, you know, that there was no penalty. And certainly we have homeowners who are very frustrated that they have to pay penalties, but for developers don't.
You mean, so no kind of penalty for the development itself?
The, uh, I can respond. The, uh, they, the, the guy did clear, uh, some of the area, but then he was required to replant it where co-enforcement uh, section says that our first priority is to get compliance. So, no, we didn't fire him for that. Uh, but we got compliance. And so we still have a, and we have a, a voluntary correction written up with the current, the new ones, uh, that they have a list of things that they still need to do. So, um, we, we, we lean to another adoptive part of the code.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Um, thank you, Councilor Bodie. I appreciate your background. Gives me confidence when you thought about this. I would support a reasonable, um, sort of, uh, development site, having our first home and the property behind the short platted, which became wetland. Not quite sure why they did that. But the other was, we moved into a, a four bedroom, two bed, sixteen hundred square foot house. And, uh, I think that's quite reasonable, that you don't need a twenty five hundred square foot house to make a reasonable use out of the property.
That's true. Uh, that people like to know.
I, it's a quick question following up. Um, so if they clear the trees before they start building, uh, can we, can there be, in other words, if they damage the site before they start building, rather than just be a replanting requirement? Can we kind of red tag the, the building, right? Because, or, or force them to do all the planting before they begin building because to me, uh, if there's not, if there's not a penalty, if, if they do it after they build the property, I understand that. But if they clear before they build the structure, then shouldn't there be some penalty, uh, related to the building itself?
Related to the action. Can't penalize them for some future, but we can go after them like we have in many cases, like the woman just got a, uh, twenty thousand dollar fine.
Yes, but can we make them to have to delay their building because they violated one of our other rules? They're a non-compliant. That's why.
Then they're already late because they've got a, they've got a resolve that, that issue.
Before they can, that's my question.
They're not going to, they're, they're reasonable use for it until we, we resolve that issue, but they can apply.
They, but they cannot like break ground until they take care of their violation. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So that, that's what I was trying to, you know, fully get at.
Yeah. Thank you. Well, let me start off by saying thank you, Chair Larson and Steve. Uh, the planning commission did excellent work. And this has been rattling around in, in communities minds for a very, very long time. And it's nice to have some better understanding here. Just two, two thoughts. One, piggyback, piggybacking on what Councilor Bodie said, um, and Councilman Lebo re forced by. We need, do need to take a look at that. What is, what is reasonable choosing? I mean precedent is precedent, um, locally, but let, let, we can, we can certainly examine that and see if it can be tuned in, in a way that is legally defensible. And the second thing was, Steve, uh, we've talked about this before, the question of the mitigation plans and that, that is something that is a resource intensive kind of situation for, you know, five years. Generally five years, I think. Yeah. So, uh, colleagues, this is something that we need to think about in terms of budgeting. To your point, Chair Larson, that we need to think about resourcing that appropriately so that it's not just something on a piece of paper and that people have to make sure that trees are viable and safe. I'll be happy. So that's one of the changes that's directed at. Yeah.
Well, thanks. And thanks again, um, Steve and Maddie for, for the work on this. So I have a question that, because I, I'm not a land use expert, so I, I'm sort of going back to basics here, but seems to me as I watched some parcels change hands in, in my own neighborhood that there are buyers who are either not doing their due diligence or actually misinformed about the viability of building on the lot that they purchased. And I don't know what in our code can help that situation. And I guess I worry about it going forward because of some of the bills that before the legislature that we may see more short flats, we may see, um, more, you know, the few remaining empty lots in our city being purchased. And many of them are lots that frankly just aren't viable for building. And so I'm, I'm concerned about how we deal with that and whether there's anything in the code that helps us.
The, there's plenty of code, as Chair Larson included, your, the, your, your staffing is such that we're, we're, uh, you're distributing co-enforcement, um, duties over two or three positions, you know, and, and so one assistant plan are doing some things. We have the arborist doing the tree related stuff. And then, uh, Nick and I, you know, are, are trying, you know, dealing with the more complicated cases. Uh, and so, you know, if, if, if you're really concerned about code enforcement, yeah, you can do what other jurisdictions around you do. They, they have a code enforcement office that's just dedicated to code enforcement, following up each one of these things. So it's a list of it. And that's all we're worried about. So, you know, each one of us has all of these priorities that come up. And so code enforcement, code enforcement kind of drop back, you know, to, because other things like, you know, there are ordinances before the council right now, I think, you know, a lot to do. So, so, yeah.
But I, I guess my question was a little bit different, not about code enforcement, but about.
On education.
About. Can somebody put a piece of land on, you know, out for sale that cannot, that does not in fact meet any, any of the right ear of the building on, you know, I mean, that is just totally unacceptable to put a building on, you know, very steep slopes.
Yeah, they can, um, and, you know, what is. Anyone who's doing their due diligence coming playing in by them asking what, what can I do with this? So it is incumbent upon the buyer to do that. And, you know, in, in the situations where that's what this, this is the one outlet could use critical areas for those people.
I think that's, that's the challenge is that if you're selling a property like that and it's completely encumbered, you have the RE code to lean on and you might not build on that property, but someone else might. And, and, and that's, that was why we went and took it up as an item. I thought it was really important for all of these reasons. And I did just want to mention Steve's right on the line. As I said, it was in another area. We felt like in our discussions that, that it seemed ludicrous that somebody would willfully, you know, after they had their CO and were living on the property, do something very willfully. And it was wrong and that there would be no penalty. So, but we couldn't take that up because it's not part of, not RE. So I don't know if that's something you guys can look at elsewhere, but uh, where, where you have the developers who are moving that in our community, it might be nice to have a stick.
I've been saying for years, this, you know, people don't know what they're buying, you know, everybody's house, I buy a lot of property. Every time you have the person sitting here, oh, this is this, it gets signed and this, the Laurie's case, you probably read it, every one of them. Like, what stops the city from having one of those pages in the world? By the way, this is a tree ordinance where you're buying your house. You could probably read this. And here's our critical areas ordinance. And when they initially down there, when they come around later on, say, oh yeah, we're going to do this. Uh, you, you read this already.
Um, you know, I mean, I, I don't know. How, how does that process start?
Well, that's, it's mandatory. Somehow we have a lot. It's manual, mandatory to put that and never, it's a realtor's packet whenever they close on a house.
Yeah, I, I don't know. It would have to be a great question for the city attorney. That's really where it starts. And I think the real estate has some, um, obligation, you know, to just, you know, tell owner to disclose, you know, issues of the property, but I don't know how.
I can catch it before. That's, you know, everybody I have friends buy houses.
Oh yeah, you cut down those trees. It's not a big deal. And you're going to be part of the beach club and you're going to do this.
Yeah.
It's really not what is your.
Yes. Um, yeah, thanks for bringing this to us. It all seems very reasonable, pardon the pun. Um, so I, I have two points. First, kind of jumping on this conversation, looking at section H, it seems that that sort of begins to address this by saying that any previous decisions go into the record. So am I correct that this is the sort of thing, if someone is buying a house, there, either they or through title insurance or something like that would find whatever the county has recorded that, oh, here are the, you know, the restrictions or conditions on building here.
That's after they're built. So a home that was built through an RE with, and that's our request is that that be reported. So they realized they're buying a house that was built under special conditions and the special terms that govern it's, um, you know, long-term care.
So it would be in their title report that they read.
Like they can't. That was part of their intention, you know, based on, they can't fill it in, but like an ADU, like by their actual lot lines and so forth. Maybe they think, oh, I'm going to put any view here. I'm going to fill this in and do that. But it would show on their actual property records that that area was part of a mitigation plan and it cannot be here. Be modernized.
And what, what they should find is a, um, a document, a map that shows, you know, this is track A and track B. And, uh, there, there's area around the house, usually about fifteen feet, uh, in diameter that, you know, for them to use. Everything else is in a pretty clear address.
And then my second one, um, you mentioned ADUs. And so I, I think a lot of our discussion is being here's a, what was it vacant?
And so I think a lot of our discussion is being here's a what was a vacant lot? Can you build your first house on it? Would an ADU be considered a reasonable use? If if their lot was otherwise the right size for an ADU, would it?
I mean, nobody's made that case, too. And I could see someone deciding to take that to the hearing exam. We could say, you know, no, you can't. We we bring bad and good applications to the hearing exam. Decide you may be recommended to dial after we look at that. You know, they certainly could apply more. If there's already a house on there, they could apply their hearing examiner and say, well, why can't you do an interior? Attaching. He would ask a lot of questions like, you know, is another way to get reasonable use? And so so I I don't think it'd fly, but you know, there's I wouldn't put a house on the health of that.
I think that's where the the piece that we talked about in the planning commission and that Councilmember Bodie just brought up about putting language in that would restrict the maximum footprint on a property or the maximum percentage of the property that could have, you know, footprint. Maybe they have a unique property and there happens to be just the right amount of, you know, noncritical area that that maybe you could sit on. But by by spelling that out, it would at least have a lever. I think the way we ended on that conversation, she said the hearing examiner would frown upon a limit set in there or?
No, I I think it's your fellow planning commissioners that started asking questions about, well, what if the lot is forty thousand square feet? And they, you know, they can show that, that, you know, that this can be built on without significantly impacting an area, say, you know, to more than like fifteen hundred square feet. And and so that that was the discussion. And I don't think there was a majority that wanted to put it.
No, actually, the so so lots where that would be an issue would be lots that are completely encumbered. If they weren't completely encumbered, they wouldn't necessarily need R U. It would just be too small to build on part that's not a critical area.
But there's various types of.
So even if it's forty thousand and the whole thing is critical areas, say, a steep slope. So the basis, the basis already is that the entire area is critical, not.
Thank you. Just a comment having him to go before the caring exam. They're limited by which they can interpret. The question that they've had. So they're not in a position to say, I don't like it, so I do a little bit. They're not free to say that because limited is fifteen hundred square foot for your total residential. They can't just say, well, I think twenty thousands, twenty five hundred is reasonable, therefore I approve it. And unlimited by what the law says. Right. We just don't have that. But the the hearing examiner is not in a position to create new law. They can only interpret the laws that they have before them. And if the law is ambiguous, then they have the ability.
Thank you. I think the piece that I get I struggle with is the is E. Or no, sorry, not E, D. It shall grant an exception from the requirement of this chapter only to the minimum necessary extent to allow for reasonable reasonable economic use. And I think there's so much interpretation there. Is there any supportive language that we can provide that's legally allowable? The sort of. You know, if if they could have put a twenty five hundred square foot house on this property if it had no encumbrance. What is then a minimum? Is it a smaller home? Is it a different location? And this is all under the hearing examiner's interpretation at this point. But I think we feel maybe on council is here. So we'd like a little bit more rails to understanding what that would look like. Has that been? Is there anything else that we've seen added to that language that would work?
I just want to say the Kirkland ordinance does have more detailed decision criteria. Now, they don't use a hearing examiner. It's the city planning director who makes the decision. But they have somewhat more detailed, you know, that all of the following conditions have to be met. And it's it's a checklist. And I am mindful, I was going to think of this as Councilmember Riddle was saying it. Of our planning director saying he doesn't want that much discretion. So. Want our examiner to have that much discretion either. So so there are, there is some, again, without reinventing the wheel, there is some additional language. We could look at that Councilmember Riddle that might give some greater definition and sideboards to that. Especially, you know, we have a hearing examiner who we've been working with for a very long time. But we could have a brand new hearing examiner who doesn't even know L F A in the in the near term. So that I think that's that's a smart question. Could I just say one more thing for enforcement? When I did apartment conservation easements in my job and I did dozens every year. I was concerned that we had lack of enforcement and no money for enforcement. So what I did is set up a Google Earth kind of system where when the property was acquired, we had a baseline of the conserved areas. And then every year we would take a Google Earth kind of or some some G I S database system. I don't know, whatever it was, it was freely cheap. And they would look at it. And then, you know, a a person did have to go through and review them and see if there was anything that looked out of place. And if it did look out of place, then it would trigger a site visit. But basically, it was a very inexpensive enforcement mechanism that didn't require much except someone who had experience reading those kind of images and and taking into account the real world. So I do think for R U Es, I wouldn't say that this made sense for every property. But perhaps for R U Es where we have certain limited number of them, something like that would be possible. So just wanted to say.
Steve will be requesting a planning department drone here. That's how Shoreline does it parking.
Really?
Buddy got a car.
The drone.
Yeah, down from his house and it was out for like five days. I wait, they knew it. And he asked, you know, the sky.
Wow.
Yeah, yes. Just to get a couple of thoughts. Yeah, again, this comes back to more about sort of ensuring that people are compliant. And to your point, Councilor, but I think that's that's great. Because when somebody has just a regular application for something, you know, whatever, there it's 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 one and done sort of. And this is dynamic. It goes for, you know, five years or or so. And just going back to the idea of these kind of guardrails and limit limitations on the size, too. We've all seen it over the years. It wasn't just the last few years that it wasn't even, it was not even economically feasible to build on these lots. But because of the, you know, the appreciation of real estate in our areas becomes so valuable that people found them to find places to build. And I think that the question of finding a place that makes sense, that is a reasonable use, that is legally defensible. The city can say, yes. You know, to to the question, maybe it is an ADU sized thing. Maybe I I don't know. It it really is up to our legal team to to set those standards. But the Kirkland code I reviewed as well. It's very intriguing. And I think that there's, and there are probably other examples out there that have some, you know, guardrails that that would make some sense. And then we'll also hopefully put a place from an economic standpoint, put some stakes in the ground so that people are going to go, well, like the the property at the edge of the city in Mount McTerris. I mean, you're going to have to build a pretty expensive house to make that work because this can be very expensive. There's a pin pile. There's all sorts of things going on there, even on a R U B basis. So if it's if it's the footprint has shrunk down to a small amount, that fundamental investment to just build anything there may it may not be financially feasible. And it may make sense to help protect the environment in that regard if it's legally defensible. So not to whoopsaw you too much, Director, but going back to point five there. You know, and thanks, Chair Larson, for clarifying what the thinking and that was. We we have an example on the planning commissions, the planning department's webpage. It's forty six eleven Northeast one seventy eighth street. That was the one, the exceptional tree R U E. That was short plaid that the previous owner had made. The current, well, current owner of this larger part of the short plaid didn't know about that. And then the short plaid was sold separately by the previous owner who was still retaining rents. Would that have stopped that kind of R U E?
I don't think so, because the regulation was adopted well after that short plaid. We have a tree R U E until, I think, twenty seventeen. So that became a new requirement.
But if timing wasn't an issue.
So, yeah, I I I don't think, you know, that it would be, it would be tough to say that you left. What is what is the the result of their own actions? So they, you know, what is it that they did? In a case like that, say, you know, say somebody's short plats right now. And there's, you know, we're we are going to get based on, you know, current requirements, a good tree survey. So we're probably going to see, oh, there's a forty four inch gutter burr right there where you want to put your building on. Say, you know, that's that's probably not going to fly. So while we're in the short plaid process, maybe you want to change some minds. So but, you know, I think it could be, when this happens, it could be a forty one inch. And that's what happened to Crane was that his tree grew. One of those trees grew the time he started to purchase a lot. And then it became so so trees are moving targets. We can start with just a land tree. And all of a sudden, you're going to.
I I think the point the other council member for Tiny makes, I'd like to make sure is clear is suppose the property changes hands. It it should be not just the new property owner, but the predecessor in ownership interest. Because if they do the, if someone else does the short plaid, then the new owner comes in and says, oh, I'm sorry, I need an R U E. And it's all caused by the previous owner doing the short plaid. I I'd like to try to make sure the language isn't just the applicant or property owner, but the the predecessor in interest because, well.
I wonder though if that has.
Can you even do a short plaid if one of those lots is unbuildable?
Yeah, it probably has to go a short plaid code, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The short plats are not, you're not eligible for a short plaid.
If you're creating a lot that you can argue. That's.
Does it have to have a balance where the buildable area without use?
Yeah, so I mean, right now, many of us are following things that are going on in Olympia. Particularly, which be eleven ten. I'm assuming, Steve, that if the standard becomes you could have X on any lot. It's even though, so for example, duplex, that's what they're, you know, they've been talking about. I noticed in that, in in the legislation, it says that nothing precludes. I remember the specific language, nothing precludes a municipality, somebody from building a single family home. So what is going to be the base for an R U E? Is it going to still remain a single family home? Or or and again, I don't want to depress everybody here because we're always trying to figure out what this really means. But it is moving target. So what if it suddenly becomes a reasonable use is a duplex or triplex or?
But I think that language says you can't impose any more conditions on the multi housing than you do for a single family home. So if the R U E provisions, that would be my argument. If R U E provisions apply to the single family home, you can run roughshod through them. You don't have an entitlement to, you know, to build for. You only have the opportunity if it fits the existing code or.
On on point, I'm looking at bill eleven ten. And it does say the provisions of this section about density do not apply to lots designated with critical areas. So it seems like that will help us.
Quite that that was that was inserted a while ago. I forgot about that. Thank you, Larry. Yeah, yeah, the tree. Areas on the.
Yeah, unfortunately, the urban forestry bill did not this week, so.
Thank you for giving me just to speak with you about this.
Yes, I'm sorry, Senator.
That's okay. So if we have a minimum buildable lot size for when we do a subdivision or a short plaid. Could we reference that as sort of a maximum for reasonable use? In other words, if we could turn back time and redo this lot to achieve that minimum thousand, then that would be the maximum for reasonable use? Is that something that we think we would have some grounds to be able to stand behind?
Yeah. They're huge. The allowances for a single family zone, it's just massive size of house you build on even seventy two hundred square foot lot. So I think, you know, we're we're looking at clamping it down even further than what the zoning allows. Zoning is is pretty, pretty, pretty relaxed.
I think the the thing that we talked a lot about, though, in the planning commission about that, though, is to compare the critical lots that are encumbered by critical area to a single family lot are are apples to apples. Because you're talking about a lot that doesn't have, you know, the environmental sensitivities versus a lot that is completely encumbered by environmental sensitivity. So I don't think that that, I don't think there was much that we could do because we couldn't make any progress on the footprint. But I think that the, I think those two are sort of divorced from one another because you're talking about very different conditions. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Good work.
Are you done, Senator, or you have anything more?
No, I I think I'm done. I'm just, you know, I guess I would like to understand maybe from you, Steve, just a little bit more about. What would you deny for a short plaid? Like, when would, you know, right now, creating a new short plaid? Like, what would you be able to say, we can't do that because that's?
Yeah.
allowable.
You know, it's in a zone, a lot zoned seventy two hundred. And let's say it's twenty eight hundred square feet. We could say, okay, well, you can probably carve three lots out of that beneath the zone. So but if there are critical areas there, then we'd also have the test that has to have that thousand square feet minimum on each one of those lots without any reduction of bumpers. So those so those would kind of work in tandem to decide, you know, what size lot, how the lots. Get to your question.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Except me, that's that seems to be that sweet footprint of a buildable lot is that thousand square feet that we would. If we were able to retcon and redo that short plaid, that would be what we would require on each each lot to have that thousand square foot. So I would want us to at least not exceed that in a reasonable use exception. It it doesn't seem right that they can get more buildable area for a reasonable use exception than we than they would have if we had the lot properly sized to the current codes. That's just my thoughts.